The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning. Okay, we've got the agenda ahead of us, and we've got one addition, uh, we've got a letter of resignation from the ambulance, and we'll add that to the agenda. Is there any other additions, corrections, or deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, we have the minutes from last Monday's board meeting, if everyone had a chance to review those.
Couple corrections. Um, where it says Steve Naess, section fifteen of Sheridan, that should say section fifteen of Washington, and immediately after that, we need to insert Craig Bell, section fifteen Sheridan Township. So Craig Bell was left out, and, uh, and then, um, someone else pointed out, uh, Obman Farms is misspelled. It sounds almost presidential the way they put Obama. They probably want Obman down there, so just a spelling correction there. I'll move to approve the minutes of those corrections.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll get on to the first item on the agenda is the Mid-American Electric Easement in section nine of Maple River. We have a representative from, uh, Mid-American Unitary. I'll do introductions. I'm Marty Danzer, Chairman of the Board.
Neil Bach.
Gene Miners.
Dean Shetler.
And Mark Beardmore. So with that, we'll go, we've got a copy of that easement in your pocket, if everyone had a chance to review the...
Does our county attorney lift it over?
Yes.
I assume this is up at the new, up at Maple River.
Yeah, they included a map here, I'll pass it around.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, too.
A lot of activity in that area.
Yeah, every day now.
Discussion with him Saturday night, if he wants to be open by the eleventh of September.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Define "open." It's open now, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's the problem, I need to get a quote.
A resolution here that will need to pass, the resolution to authorize the chair to sign the easement.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the easement?
If there's no, uh, questions or concerns, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the easement.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. It is a resolution, so it'll be roll call.
Danzer?
Yes.
Beardmore?
Yes.
Shetler?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. So here is the resolution, and I believe the easement just requires Marty's signatures.
Am I electricity thi- this week?
It won't be this week. Next week, probably.
Well, I think they're counting on it this week.
Yeah, that's right.
That's what I heard, too.
They were counting on it a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You have a good week.
Man, they've been building everything there off a generator.
Really?
Yeah.
Lot of gas.
Lot of noise.
We drove by there, I was really surprised how close it is to the house.
I thought so, too. But she, apparently, you know, she's never been here, and all the conversations they've had, she's just looking for neighbors, apparently.
Yeah, it sounds like she gets in her golf cart every evening and drives over there and sees what's going on.
I have talked with his mic here, sort of in that driveway, and he's talking about there's one guy, he just drove in the driveway and pulled up, well, they were sitting over there working, comes in, "You guys open?"
Ready to be open, huh?
Yeah, we built our house, or particularly our other building here, just amazing how many people just, if you pour in cement, they walk right in there, "What are you doing here?"
No problems, huh?
Yes, it's like, "Are you the building inspector, or what?"
Okay. Okay, Dave's not here yet. We'll go down to newer management plans next then, the fourth item. We've got two of them today, one for Joe Naess in section nineteen of Neese Township, and that one, there is no changes. And the second one is for Mike Naess in section twenty-nine of Neese Township, and that one, there's no changes. Pass those down to Courtney. Guess with that, we'll go down...
Do the payables?
Yeah, we'll do the payables next. Anything I missed, Courtney? For the payables?
I don't know.
There was lots of them, but certainly nothing of any...
Rolling Hills, Courtney, payment's a big one.
Well, and then we had to reimburse them for the state payment that we got.
Yep, there's two checks there.
Yeah, otherwise, uh, even secondary roads was a bit lighter than this.
It's coming. It's coming. Yeah. It's coming down the road.
If there's no questions or concerns, I'll make a motion to approve the payables.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the payables. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll go down to secondary roads. Dave?
Good morning, David.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Dave.
Nice morning out there.
It is nice.
Yeah, it is.
Spotty rain, they said.
Spotty rain, I think we had about .500s. Becky said she had about seven tenths down the road.
About six and nine.
Nice rain.
They're out there putting asphalt down the road. Should have the bottom on that coon ramp at six miles today, and take about maybe three days to get the two top lifts on, or the side, I guess.
They're gonna have a good week for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Checked out the, call it the helper road, that looked really nice to you. It's kind of, I'm afraid there'd be some speed limits broke there, it's so smooth, and people won't even know they're going that fast now, I know after driving on it before. Um, what's the, um, for, as far as the shouldering to get done, there's gonna take quite a bit of material there.
It is, yeah.
What's the situation there?
Materials, it's actually at the Schumacher pit.
Okay.
It's, it's on...
Yeah.
In County, anyway.
Yeah.
So it'll go on pretty fast when I do it, but they're gonna wait till they get everything done, and then do the shouldering all at the end. I guess, particularly in love with that method of doing it, it'd be nice to do it, but from their standpoint, it does give them a chance to pick their plan up, move it, keep their truck drivers busy, do the shouldering material, keep, keep all the other people that aren't making the plan.
Yeah, that's not as weather sensitive either, or anything, I can see why they're doing it that way, but yeah, it's quite a drive-off there, and it's gonna take a lot of material, the way it looks.
All, yeah, yeah, just, yeah, a lot of white rock, and a lot of spence.
Yeah.
Probably don't wanna really know about that or think about that too much, 'cause it's just, it is...
But, look, some of the driveways where they put the gravel and the white rock in, you know, right at the edge of them, the guy's gonna have to be careful how they turn, 'cause it really drops off there, and...
Yeah.
Take a wagon or something around there, you'd have to...
They'll get picked up when I do the shoulders.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that mailbox turned out, so it'll, it'll get picked up, yeah, it's, it's gonna take a ton of material, to say the least.
But looks real good.
Only one little boulder.
Yeah. What was that?
It's in the north bomb lane there, uh, south Bob Behrens. They rolled the last roll, finish roll on it, and it went.
Yeah.
It was evidently where there was a blowout, and afterwards, to give away, they had to cut it down, but over the surface, they cut cement and used some of the subgrate out.
Took it all out, it was, it was kind of mushy.
It's got just a little, just a little bit, but not too bad.
Yeah, that's kind of a hard one to do, a lot of handwork, and all that in there, so, yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure how the overall smoothness, you know, they got a profilometer on the, on it, that's, they get painted sand, but it's really smooth, and we're hoping it's smooth.
Oh, I think it is.
Hope to get a award, either railroad tracks turned out pretty decent.
'Cause I got, one of the guys that lives along, so too, said same thing, he did, "I'm gonna get picked up for speeding on it now."
It just smoothes the road, yeah. Do they give smoothness awards out anymore, or not?
They do, yeah.
That'd be a good candidate.
That's a big Danny thing, to get a smoothness award. We get to go down to the convention, and they go back front, they give you the plaque, and all that, so...
Really?
Yeah, we're real, real hopeful to get one.
Well, that west side road's really, really smooth, too.
Yeah.
It's nice.
So, yeah, hopefully by the end of the week, they'll, they'll be over at Ralston, who knows how long that's gonna take, that's, that's multifaceted, and Green County added on a stretch of, their stretch of Old Thirty, and we've got our stretch in the Rise Project portion, and the widening, and...
The halls are getting shorter, though, aren't they?
The halls getting shorter, yeah, yeah, that's, that makes a big difference.
Ralston, you only got six weeks to harvest.
Yeah, and Willie.
What, what?
And Willie, yeah.
Are you a way with the...
Gosh, I had to stop thinking about that for a second.
Shoulders, those two projects are done?
You know, I don't know, those will be smaller than where...
They may take some of the trucks off.
They may take some of the trucks off, and they won't, they'll be, they'll be kind of...
School starting soon.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
That's a good question. I'm thinking Roselle. Willie's, Willie's got some preparatory work to do with the curves and whatnot. Then Box Culver guy's gonna come in, hopefully. We're gonna have a pre-con on the eighteenth. And the utilities.
On the, uh, Ralston project with, um, Zephyr Avenue, are they doing it all the way up Highway Thirty, or are they gonna stop around that culvert, or what, or...
Uh, old, that stretch of Old Thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The very north edge of that, it's actually in pretty good shape from the culvert on, that cement part, not a crack in it, actually.
Yeah, that, um...
Gonna overlay that as well, to do the whole thing.
That's, that's getting an inch of leveling course and an inch of half of overlay. All, all that cement that's twenty feet wide in there is gonna get widened out.
Too narrow, I understand that. Yeah, other than being too narrow, that last part from that, there's a culvert there on, is, there's not a crack in it.
Not in bad shape, no.
Yeah. Um, if they'd ever have any extra material, and I doubt that would happen, but right where, um, I guess it's two hundred tenth, heads over to, um, Zephyr, that's always a really rough spot there, it'd be a good place to smack a little down to, and, uh, but just if there's extra material, you know.
I hope with the widening, and it, 'cause that is a rough spot, like you say, uh, coming off the edge of that curve there.
Yeah, and, uh, it doesn't really look too bad right now, 'cause the weather's been good, and they've been maintaining well, but it has some issues at times, so...
I was over there the other day, I was amazed at the traffic on that road, it's just, it's, it's like all of a sudden, just, there seems to be quite a bit more traffic on that road.
Okay.
Maybe they heard they were doing some work, or...
So I still, Mark, we only got six weeks to do the Ralston project, 'cause we'll be in harvest in six weeks.
Really?
Yeah.
Six weeks?
Yeah.
Better get the gear, huh? That's, that's not gonna be good if we're working on harvest.
They'll get it down.
They'll make a lot of headaches this week.
They will, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't get a bunch of rain, now, they should build definitely fast.
While we're working on that road by Ralston, do, is the elevator able to get out going south, um, with their trucks?
Yeah, and they should be able to go either way.
They could go either way. With the pilot car, keep it open, and, uh, and I can sure see that, you know, they're
going around in a circle like they were talking with the traffic to get their internal road developed to where they can come up to this, this road and get out, that's sure gonna improve the flow of traffic during harvest in there.
Yeah, it'll make a nice difference. Two hundred tenth will just be busy for a few weeks, and then the road on the east side will be busy.
Yeah, they're gonna widen that stretch in Green County, they're gonna do like we're doing on the Rise Project, they're gonna widen that, overlay that much the same, too, so, everything there should look pretty well the same.
Going across, over from the, to the Highway Thirty?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Beats in there.
Yeah, so all that'll be in, in really good shape, which is good, 'cause it's not in that great shape right now.
How much have we done on that shoulder, that white eighteen inches, or...
Uh, two foot and three foot.
How much?
Six inches, and then it'll get overlaid, uh, the Rise Project, it'll get actually overlaid with four inches, the rest of it'll get overlaid with two and a half inches.
Yeah, the narrowness of the road causes a lot of issues, because everybody's driving right on the itch.
Yeah.
That's where...
It's all busted off.
Mm-hmm.
And this, this should be a good way with the widening, and then leveling course should be a good way to deal with that, to get that all kind of patched up.
Yeah, but I was amazed at how bad all that road is, and yet how good the last few hundred feet was, as, um, Zephyr connects up with Highway Thirty, there's a lot of crack in that, that last, from the culvert on, that cement, but it is very narrow.
Did you see where we milled?
Yes.
Right up next to that, that's where we're gonna tie in.
Okay, yep, yep, that's quite obvious. Mm-hmm.
All I've got is one utility permit from Windstream. They come out of Little Rock, Arkansas now, um, we've still got our same engineer. They're, uh, replacing five hundred and thirty foot of aerial cable with five hundred and thirty foot of buried cable in section fifteen of Jasper Township. It's a road directly east of Lanesboro, got a small map in here, you can see it, and then a larger, more detailed drawing there. We're gonna put it, uh, about three foot off the edge of the gravel, the way it looks, basically in the shoulder of the road. Pretty small, uh, pretty small project.
Yeah, that's right where we were. Yep. Well, you know, this one's western. We were at, we were at section thirteen, I think, but, uh, but there was others there. Straighter unit.
I'll make a motion to accept, approve the utility permit.
Got a motion, you need a second?
Second, thank.
Got a motion and a second to approve the utilities permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I had just one other thing I wrote down, uh, we've got a dump truck in the budget this year. Uh, be okay if I'd go out and get some quotes for that, and the box, and the hydraulics, and the snowplow, and all that stuff? I probably better get going on that if we're gonna do anything.
Is there a trade-in, Dave?
I don't think so, Neil.
Okay.
Unless we, um...
Double axle.
Double axle, yeah. And I just, I just put one in, um, usually we buy them in pairs, because it is kind of nice to work on them in pairs. Um, I really haven't done my due diligence of talking to Mike and the mechanics about it, to, you know, present a good case for two, or even for one, as far as that goes.
Capable of pulling a pop?
Capable of pulling a pop, yeah.
Okay.
Trying to think, it was two thousand twelve, the last time I purchased some, seems like it was just yesterday, but, uh...
I bet it has been.
I, I think it has been, yeah. They do, they, they start racking up miles, and, uh, pretty soon, you know, you've got a whole bunch of miles on it, you need to do something. But I've always hoped we could get to the point where we'd get enough trucks, so we'd keep our, our spares, uh, that we could have trucks from maintenance men to run on rainy days, or things like that, and it worked, but it just, we haven't gotten there yet, and, uh...
They, uh, priced them up with the, um, new pollution requirements on them and everything?
Yeah, I'd hate to guess, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars, I suppose, by the time we get everything we need, it's just, who'd have guessed?
Do you have a preference, Smarts?
Local dealers are nice, yeah, Sterling, and they... Local, local dealers would be the best, either Mac or International would be the two I'd, I'd be after. Uh, the Sterlings, we do, we do have quite a bit of trouble getting parts for that. Or Freightline, or something like that, but it, it really is nice to have a local dealer, it's just, we're really lucky to, to have that, just to be able to take them out there, especially with all the sophisticated computer stuff that they have on them anymore, and, you know, they're almost becoming unrepairable in many, many cases.
Probably have to order it, wouldn't you?
Yes, I'm sure, yeah, it'd be pretty specialized, pretty, probably.
You're, you're gonna be adding to the fleet, then?
Be adding to the fleet, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, there's not a, not a unit that I think we could get rid of. Our oldest one is twenty-three, and it's, it's the last in the series of three that we bought in the, uh, early nineties, I think it's a ninety-one, uh, but it's still, you know, a good truck, as far as hauling gravel and hauling dirt and that. Then we kind of jump into ninety-nine as our, our next bunch. We had kind of a period in there where we had some one burned up, and it was over that period that we didn't have, but we didn't purchase a whole lot for that period.
And the box?
Box, I think just a conventional fifteen foot dump body with a tailgate sander. I don't, I don't know that we'd go with a frank, uh, we've got some franks, we've kept our franks as far as for sanding and whatnot, they're, they're nice boxes, they're, they're heavy and they're real expensive, they're about twice as much as a, a regular dump body. That's, that's the one that tips forward.
Forward.
Kind of lost count, what we've got, I think we've got maybe five of those. Really have to think about that a little bit, to come up with an accurate count on that, maybe six with a, um, we've got a tin cone box, too, that's pretty well the same configuration. We seem to get along with those rear mounted sanders. Snowplow, probably staying with what we have, uh, stayed with there. Can't even, can't even think of the name right now, although I, I do kind of wanna look at Monroe, 'cause they've got a similar hitch configuration, that maybe we could go with a Monroe also.
So you've got it in the budget, and what you'd like to do is get some specs together and get some bids, is that the process here, Dave?
That'd be it, yeah, and I, I suspect, kind of gotta think about the whole, whole thing at once, you gotta think about the box, and the hydraulics, and the snowplow, and all that stuff at once, you, you get the right chassis, and the right cab axle, and all of that, so it's kind of gotta be a package deal, I guess. Uh, but truck's always the thing we're gonna start with first, with the chassis.
Well, I'd say go ahead and get, put something together, get some quotes. They ain't buying one yet.
Yeah.
You gotta budget it, but it'll, it's gonna start with a two by the time it's done.
Yeah. I sure think you're right, Mark. Let's we get a Sterling. We have to get a Houston. Dell would like a...
An International.
But you really only have a couple, I guess, yeah, I really only have some Mac and International, then you gotta go to Freightliner or something like that, when you're...
Yeah, yeah. We've got that one Sterling on the fleet. But it, it is a challenge, getting parts for it.
Well, they don't even make a Sterling anymore.
No, no, Freightliner, get the parts for it. Anyway.
Get a chance, get a chance to get over to Maple River, that deal?
Uh, I don't know if Al got that done or not.
I drove by there today, but I have, I was in a traffic situation, so I couldn't, forgot to even look.
At Maple River, a traffic situation?
Yeah, there was. There was a lady that couldn't get the car fast enough, so I had to watch out for her.
That's a good one, dude.
It's crazy, I especially went that way to look.
No, I'm, I might need to go over there and have a look, huh?
Hopefully do it on the way back home. Hopefully there won't be a traffic situation.
You can yell at me, maybe, that, if it's not done.
Dean, is that the way they call it, Maple River Junction?
I guess.
What's the status on that Halber Corner on Thirty? They didn't finish?
I don't know what's going on there, they hadn't finished that, they got the cones out there yet, and no plant.
And the plant's gone.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what's going on. And I, I don't know, I'm not sure who they in town, if that's gonna be a tri-state one, who's doing the work, working town, yeah.
Dave, I, I was approached by one of the constituents down there, on that Thirty, runs like this, and the Halber Road's like this, and this had a slow lane that went like this, and this is only two hundred feet, and we run it by them both, and they were saying if they stopped, they, they had to go out in the fast lane to get it back in the Sterling, so why not extend that?
The slow lane, yeah.
Which they, they started to, but they didn't finish it.
They just had to put the top lift on it.
Yeah, and it looks, you know, to me, and I got a look, the Townsley Corners the same way.
Is it?
Yeah, so we run it past, we had to run past two of them to get a flight go far enough, but at least they were doing it, now they quit, and...
No, I'm curious, too.
My next question, do you know what they're doing down at Townsley? Are they working on that bridge there, east, west of Corner Station?
I don't know.
Park stuff, and I had, yeah, and I had another guy ask me, said that, he's seen something about they're working down until October, and that, and I, I think it's by that bridge, but I don't know what they're doing down there.
They're gonna work down by spores, they've got that box culver to make it.
Yeah, I know, I've seen that, that one's, that I knew what was going on there.
But no, I don't know if, but I think about that, though.
Have they started out here yet? On the old Highway Thirty, East of Townsley?
I just got the pre-con on Eighteenth, he said.
Eighteenth is a pre-con, yeah, so I'm thinking, hopefully sometime this month, yeah, the month of August would be a good start.
Sounds like the DOT could use some county supervisor intervention there, Gene, keep it up.
Yeah, well, you know, and I never get a thought, well, Bob Behrens, I thought it up, he, it made sense.
No, I, I saw that on, uh, the Halber Road and Highway, um, Thirty there.
Yeah, but I thought it was a good idea.
But they did part of it, they, they quit, I don't know what's...
They got red cones set up there, yeah, they're still doing something there, we just don't know what their, what the finished product's gonna be.
The problem, I see, is the plant's gone.
Yeah.
And the rest of the bunch are gonna be gone before too long.
Yeah, unless they're gonna get some from the guys in town that are doing it here, or they could get some from...
They gotta have a machine to put it down on it, they gotta run a machine out there for that?
Maybe they might just use the shoulder machine, they've been doing, yeah, 'cause that's what they did, they just used a shoulder machine to put those asphalt shoulders on, and use a, a conventional paver to do it.
You said they're still working?
West to west.
West to west side, yeah, some over there, yeah, so they're not real far away.
But then they take that plant down, up, on your west of Carol?
I think they were hauling out ice on, out here, west, on the west end of Carol on Saturday.
Oh, you mean the shoulder material?
Yeah, the white one, yeah.
No, I'm not at the speed on that, too.
Okay, I was just, I was just...
Well, they have trucks lined up, I think there's twenty, thirty trucks lined up, Saturday, west to west side.
Really?
Yeah.
Putting shoulder material down?
Yeah.
It's a 15-minute delay if you get the car.
So take the gravel.
Over there, there's nothing to get around.
All the roads today or tomorrow?
We sure hope so, it's three days is what the spec says.
I see they got marks on it where it starts.
Yeah, those come from Paul, so, yeah, I hope to get up here and get that marked. We'll wait till they get the shoulders on, and we're gonna put the edge line on and all that stuff once they get the shoulders on. They have a tendency to kind of scratch the reflective material off that with the raggedy. Of course, we're just as bad with our snow plows, so...
You have to leave there as long as you can, though.
Yeah. It's nice to get painted, they look a lot better.
Paul showed us some of the cores he took out of that. And you can't even tell the difference in layers in some of the cores. You know, if you can see where that one layer that stopped, or he took some out of the center. They got compressed enough, you can't even see that center.
The joy, yeah. Yeah, those are laying on Darren's desk, I haven't had a chance to look at those yet.
Some you can see it, some you can't, most we can't.
They take cores in the center to determine the density, to see if they've got adequate compaction because they have had some edge line separation troubles. Trying to eliminate that, come up with a system.
So is Paul gonna get a bunch of mix-up troubles in later on then, or?
His contractor to do it.
Oh, they do that?
Yeah. But knowing him, if it's not done, he'll ensure it himself.
The night they were out fixing that spot, guess who was standing or using the shovel?
Yeah.
Paul.
Wouldn't even have to guess, yeah.
Tell you what.
He didn't get home till eight or nine that night, I don't think.
Yeah, I was all three days. Tell you what, he's a good county employee.
That's for sure.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, we'll see you, thanks, Dave.
If you want to stick around. My gosh.
We're just about done.
Committee report, if you can gut that out. Do my best. Yeah, we got that. I have to buck up. Come on, man up.
Okay, we'll keep the show moving. Next item we got is a letter of resignation from the ambulance, Terry Rollins. Everybody's taking a look at that. His last date is the 26th of August, and he's going back to work for Dallas County. So need a motion to accept that resignation.
So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to accept the letter of resignation with regrets. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes in, so. Okay, that concludes the committee reports, Neil?
Sure. First committee report has to, meaning that Gene and I each attended on Thursday with RDG Amy Haas. Was there, and the technical committee from the city councils, Clay Haley and Carolyn Seaman, and Jim Owen, and Nick Bating. Nick was not present, they're there from CADC, and then Gene and I from supervisors, so that's the technical committee. And we kind of went over the outline of what was gonna happen, when, and what we're gonna do next. The next thing in our program is for us to contact people on kind of some stakeholders groups. They're trying to get ahold of people who are lenders, builders, developers, employers, public sector, which kind of take care of realtors, et cetera, et cetera, to serve on a committee that's gonna be 60 to 90 minutes, and just gonna be kind of an open forum where they say, hey banker, hey realtor, hey apartment managers, what is the housing situation in your community? And whether it be Carroll or Glidden or whatever, and is there anything you think could be done to improve that situation? So we had a good meeting, and that's where it starts, and that's gonna be the next step. Also went over, they're also gonna have community meetings in our communities. They will be in Manning, Conrapp, it's Brita, Glidden, and Carroll. And at these open houses, anyone from the surrounding communities can go to that. So that'll be a good time for public input from any citizen or person that's interested in the housing sector. And Gene will probably have more to add to that. Other than that, toured the Ralston area, looking at that before they did the work, and looked at the Halber Road, what was done there. And had some communication with, concerning our mental health advocate. I brought this up that July 1st, my mental health advocate Brett became our employee. We don't have a job description on file or 2080, and they're working on a 2080, it sounds like, with Dallas County. Haven't seen it, and Courtney's been working hard trying to get some feedback from them. So as soon as Courtney gets some good response, we'll hopefully get that wrapped up and get a... He's a good employee from all I hear, we just don't have a good job description on file for him. And he's turned in his bills for July, and by default, or by legislation, I guess, he is now our employee. So that bill got turned in to the, to the region, but Dawn is gonna send it to Courtney, and we're gonna pay it, and the region's gonna reimburse us because he is our employee now. Okay, and that kind of involved my week. And I just mentioned one other thing I visited with Courtney about this as well. We got this affidavit on a plat, and I thought maybe there'd be another plat on our agenda, but it's just a correction to one that was done. And we did, there's no action needed by us, so just basically for information. So that's why it wasn't on the agenda today. That's it.
Thanks, Gene. Gene?
Yeah, Neil covered that meeting we had Thursday very well. We have the assignment of getting those names, those two Shannon by the end of the week, this week, for those different individuals and stuff like that, so... Neil covered that. Tuesday at CADC also, West Central was at their meeting, and gave a presentation to the whole group about what's going on with them, and the different things that they're involved in. Kind of was more of a copy of what their annual meeting was like, more than anything. And then they give us a financial report here, so also, so that was my week.
I got a call last week about a resident in, actually not a resident, but a house in, in Maple River that the drive, the street part of the drive was basically missing. Wouldn't you say, Dave? Good way to say that. Actually, the, right across from the church, the water runs down there, and it must get underneath and tears it out. And she has a hard, actually, I drove my van in there too, and it did bottom out. So they have a hard time getting up into that driveway, so Dave was gonna take care of that. Then I got a call to go back to Maple River Tuesday afternoon and meet with Jason Christiansen, over there about some cleanup issues. So we're gonna address that at the Conservation Board meeting tonight, and then we'll probably bring that back to the supervisors. Headed Board of Health meeting on Tuesday evening. We did have a quorum this time. And that is a, that is a concern for the rest of the board members as to whether or not we want to continue with two of the current board members. We might be seeking others that they have a hard time making it, for whatever reason, so anyway, we'll be, we'll be addressing that. There was the, we talked about this, the youth survey in the schools. We had an extended conversation about that. Here's the results of the, of that. I guess Kemper does not participate in that, they have their own diocese survey. So I guess the concern was, if you look at the years, 2008, 2012, 14, it's really up and down as far as the participation in our comments, whereas how can you go from year to year and evaluate that survey when you're not actually surveying the same people, same schools? Some schools participate, some don't. In fact, it was Paula Klucki who presented that from, from the opportunities. She was gonna get some more information and return that to us, as far as what, what that all meant. There were some, if you look on the inside, there were some, some issues in there. The Depression issue was, Wes, have you seen it, Gene? Wes, Wes, disconcerting, I guess. There's a lot of depression in these kids, and there shouldn't be. We approved the grants for public health. They were basically pretty much all the same as last year, slightly, although that's the stats for the public health. But the grants, public health grant for $61,000, which was slightly less than last year. Home care aid. Then there was the local public health service grant for, yeah, $61,000, okay. Then there was the emergency response grant to be used for the Ebola virus. And it had to be used for Ebola virus services for $8,000. And they used it to buy suits and respirators for a public health emergency preparedness grant, you're probably familiar with that, for $55,000, we approved that. Care for yourself with breast cancer screenings, $13,500. They lowered it this year. They are allowed 50 participants this year, and that's down from six, and they're, so that'll be down from 67 last year, so... Kids Prevention Program grant for bike helmets, and I guess they got rid of those this weekend, the way it sounds, for Kids Fest. So all the grants were approved. Fall Awareness Day, I guess that is a situation that is probably more serious than a lot of people think. People who are hospitalized, released too early, and then they have situations where they, where they fall. And, but they've got a study there that they've done as far as that issue. And I think there's gonna, they're gonna be addressing that. Let's see. Environmental health, we approved that grant for, for Kerry, $53,060. And I think there's going to be also some, some discussion in the future about the public health. And I've got a finger on that, and I can share that with you guys individually.
Dean, I have a question on some of this raw data. It has to do with this chart here, it says, doing the number of 11th graders that have tried these different things. And they show the change every year, but what number did they interview for each year?
This would be the total number on top.
Okay, so out of 271, that's how many?
Right, yeah. And you see they dropped from 271 to 40, you know?
I, I marked that blue up with the different.
Yeah, that was, that was the concern, is that really the study, I don't know.
It's hard to compare one year to the next.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to evaluate it without...
To see if there's gains or...
If you're going to get anywhere. I mean, percentage-wise, you can evaluate it, but...
Thanks, Dean, that adds clarity to the report.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't know if there's anything else. I've got numbers here from Kerry on well closings and that type of, if you're interested in that. And what she did last year. I think that's my week.
Thanks, Dean. I'll make it real quick, I had no official committee activity last week, but I did receive Tyler, Ron Kersey, got back with Courtney and myself on Friday with a adjustment to their proposal. And it was too late in the day for us to really add it to today's agenda, so I think we'll probably put it on for next Monday if it fits well for you. And it's a minor change, I've got it here, but I really haven't spent any real quality time with it yet, but it looks as though it's a very minor adjustment. So I really didn't have much else before the weekend, I've got the radio and paper today.
Thanks, Mark.
See you later.
On Thursday, had a Region 12 board meeting.
I have it next week.
First item on there was the Executive Director's report, and Rick kind of gave us an overview of some of the new contracts they're working with. They're working with Early and Shadler for some CDVG housing applications. And then they're also working with Jefferson for a downtown revitalization project. We're working with Perry for a housing needs assessment, and that's gonna be a subcontract with Iowa State. The university extension, they're working with them on that. Have several for wastewater applications, get the city of Glidden, Kimbleton, Scranton, and Dedham, and also Dennison. And then the last one is a housing assistance application with the city of Vale. They're also working with the city of Guthrie Center to bring up their codes up to date, updating those. Gave us an update on all the annual dues with 2080s with all the counties, those are all paid up. Also have a house for sale in Jefferson. We had, the asking price was $45,000, we did get a sales agreement with that, and some earnest money down on that. And they're looking at trying to close that on the 19th of August. And then also working with the city of Dennison on the loan income housing trust fund, so that's in the process, near completion to close on that. Rick also gave a update on the transit report, as Tom was on vacation last week. I'll just pass this around, gives the rights for the general public. They did last Friday and Saturday night, they were doing some shuttling for the new casino over in Jefferson. And I'll give Rick to see how that went. Did hire a new driver, Mike Cotts from City of Carroll is working as a driver for the transit system. We had three new Dodge minivans that were recently delivered. And there's still a lot of fund decision as far as Medicaid waiver, that still hasn't been approved or disapproved. So that's a concern for Region 12's right now. I'll just pass this around, this has the numbers on the rights that we provided this last year, so just pass that around. Then Chris Whittaker gave a update on the local assistance. They're working with the Otten County Conservation Board, the cities of Arcadia, Carroll, Dedham, Guthrie Center, Lakeview, and Lanesboro. And Manning on the resource enhancement preservation grants, and that deadline's the 15th, was the 15th, or is gonna be the 15th of August, so that's coming up this week. Talked a little bit, he's also working with Rick on the Prairie, Perry Housing Needs Assessment. He talked a little bit about his, the CDVG applications. He's working with the city of Manning, Manning Daycare to try to apply for some funding there. They talked a little bit about salary survey, and the city manager's staff has completed a municipal survey, and they're trying to collect wage and salary informations from this 28 cities that are in the Region 12 district. So we had a new, Ashley Owen has joined the COG staff as a housing administrative assistant. She's basically taken Carlos' position as Lord Gilroy retired, Carlos took her position. Also talked a little bit about regional planner position, an offer was made to Lawrence Sudler, and she's from Ohio. And she was supposed to let us know by Friday if she was gonna accept that position. So that's pretty much everything for Region 12. Also got a letter here today from the Sons of the Union, veterans of the Civil War. They're gonna do a rededication. of the Civil War. They're going to do a re-dedication at the, uh, monument of the Carroll Cemetery. And that is going to be the third of August. It's on Saturday. And it'll be at one P M at the Carroll Cemetery. And they're looking for, uh, local dignitaries to say a few words as well.
The third of August?
Yep. Uh, uh, third of October.
Third of October.
Third of October, excuse me. But they're, they, uh, are looking for the mayors and the VFWs and, uh, the supervisors to say a few words there. So I will follow up with that too. There's a phone number here and I'll see what we can put there. Keep you in tune there. So that's all I have. Courtney?
I have one other thing. I should, I've had a couple of calls from the resident at Mount Carmel in regard to sewer issue. That there was a, it was supposed to be repaired on it by our gentleman and he has not done it yet because of water issues. Well, this has been going on for a long time. So I've been in conversation with Kerry. It's either get the thing fixed or get somebody else fixed. Cause this gal's waiting a year to try to fix her yard up and stuff like that. So there's, there was a mistake made when they did it and they're supposed to fix it. There's water, there's a water issue getting in it.
Is it, is it Rusty that's supposed to fix it or Rusty's not getting it? That surprises me.
Well, he says it's got, it's got to be dry. Well, Mount Carmel's got a high water table.
Yeah.
It's never going to get dry. Stick a pump in there.
That's, that's, it's a case where you're going to need to hold it, set the pump and go.
Do you know where the, where it's at?
I know the place, but I don't know the whole particular zone. She just calls me and I.
I'll talk to you later.
Yeah.
Anything else? Yeah, I have an order for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second. Got a motion in second to adjourn. I'll figure you say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.